Okay, today is Tuesday, December 29th, 2015. And it is 11:15, two hours actually a long time. We had the deal to have this meeting. Uh, we were not able to secure a preacher to come and preach this morning, so I thought I was gonna do that for us. If you'll be staying, remain sure to give your praise.
Good God, I have many thank you for this day, for the opportunity to be where you would position us. Well, thank you for the past season of Christmas and all the blessings that you've bestowed upon each of our. And, Lord, as well, the master that we receive, just thank you and your honor for glory and for the blood that we die for, Lord, from all of the weather that was supposed in this area. And we ask blessings upon those who have gone through a traumatic time in areas and ask that your blessings be upon them, families of their time in need. And, Lord, as we ask blessings upon all of the first responders and military personnel, both in this theater and going here as well in this world, protecting us and standing in the gates with their families. Now, as we convene this meeting, we ask blessings upon this court and all of those who are worried for this county, the things that are pleasing in the sight of the best interest of this county. Go before the Godless and keep us in your name, pray.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I know the test is light. I pledge allegiance to the test, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay. Number one is revision of amendments from December 14th, 2015 to December 21st, 2015. I don't count amendments to 2015. Any questions or no? Okay, number two is budget amendments to consider and act upon, including budget amendments for the 2015-2016 this year.
These first two pages are just fully carried over the budget for purchase of works that were outstanding.
Kay, we just have a question on two Fund 400, the capital funds project. That's just to cover above for the IT, the additional height of the tower station three. Is that where we're going from?
Yes, that's correct.
I'm going to give you a few amendments for the 2015-2016 year as we take it.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Vouchers to consider and act upon the approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the County Attorney's Office for the period of December 9th, 15th to December 21st, 2015. Check numbers 166192 through 166409, and mark transfers 650 through 655, and the amount of $2,270,140 cents. Any questions?
I make a motion that we accept the vouchers as presented.
Sir.
A motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Treasurers report. Lynn, open.
So, I'm just kind of bringing up on the, with our tax dollars. We currently have 31 million, 31.6 million in Emerald National Bank. Now, that's our total, every account, the total checking accounts combined. Um, we have been collateralized at 32 million, but for the tax season, Emerald National Bank has now increased it to 45. So, any additional tax dollars that come in, that gives us a little leeway to get the money moved before we're under collateralized. This morning, the tax office had 6.1 million in their account. They're gonna go ahead and move 2 million over to our general until they break all that down, because it's not all Potter County funds. That whole 6 million will come to Potter County. But they'll go ahead and give us 2 million today, just to keep that tone down and as the new amounts come in every day, the new taxes come in. So, that's the plan for right now. And as far as collateralized and everything, we're really doing well. I did want to bring it up today, you know, we did go with Texas class, and their rates have been quite a bit higher than Taxpool. This morning, Taxpool was 23 basis points, and Taxpool Prime is 32 basis points, which is the point above Texas class. So, we've got a little bit of competition going there, and that's a good thing. And so, but I will be kind of divvying up the funds a little bit between each one, but I'll keep you posted as our totals in each account. Any questions or comments? Thank you, thank you.
And number five, insurance report. Okay, anything unusual on that today?
No, ma'am, nothing unusual.
We'll just go right ahead and if we can, any questions on that? Prove that recognition that the Affordable Care Act. Number six, to consider and act upon amendment to our employee administrative agreement between Potter County and CSCD to conform with provisions of the Affordable Care Act to allow for care and reporting under existing legal and the specific language to follow.
Well, as you're well aware by now, the Affordable Care Act is presenting some challenges to include end-of-year reporting for this year. It's the first year that we've been required to report under the Act. Half of March, this Commissioner's Court met and approved for us to go with, it was this Association of Counties and their ARPS program to report for our end-of-year reporting for ACA. Um, one of the unique challenges for this year is our CSCD department, because CSCD is not, their employees are not technically Potter County employees, yet their payrolls are reported under our EIN through Potter County. We create the W2 forms, um, so it does create some unique challenges. We've looked at several different ways to approach this issue, to include potentially requiring or requesting that CSCD obtain a separate EIN and to eliminate that challenge completely. There are some concerns with separating the EINs. Auditing and CSCD both have concerns regarding funding and grants and feel like that would be, have adverse impact on CSCD or could have an adverse impact on them. We also looked at what a separate EIN would do to our payroll. We can handle it one of two ways. We could just separate the EINs and run them with our payroll, which would result in a lot of manual adjustments every single payroll and create the potential for some very serious errors in payroll tax reporting and that kind of thing. The other option would be a totally separate payroll, to create a separate organization and run a separate payroll, which would mean two full payrolls every payday. We didn't feel that those were the best options to meet these challenges, and so it is our recommendation and the desire of CSCD to continue operating, operating under the same EIN for payroll tax reporting and to handle those ACA end-of-year reporting as we are this year with them completing a portion of their form manually, and then ERS will provide their insurance-specific information and report that to the IRS. Finally, there's one issue that we feel like needs to be addressed. Because there are certain penalties attached to ACA reporting and/or failure to report, failure to report properly and correctly, we felt strongly that we should try to amend that contact, that contract with CSCD to include some language that would indicate or say that the penalties would be the responsibility of the parties that were responsible for the errors. In other words, if, if there were penalties that were due to the CSCD part of the reporting, CSCD would be responsible for that. And if it was a Potter County error, at the same time, our county would be responsible for those penalties.
Would that ultimately still fall on Potter County's part, the ability being a part of our?
The EIN?
Yes. Would that ultimately be still withheld or canceled?
I believe, and Dave could certainly better answer this, I believe that the contract amendment should address those concerns. And of course, at this point, our desire today is to get direction from this court as to whether to move forward with the new EIN for CSCD or to continue using the same, same EIN for this upcoming year, because as you know, January 1st is, is coming quickly and we will need to be reporting those payroll figures, beginning with the first payroll in January. And we just want to get a firm direction to report payroll. In the event that the court decides today to take this recommendation and stay with the same EIN, and Dave then would begin to work, or the County Attorney's Office would begin to work on that language, and we would bring the contract with the new language back.
Just for my clarification, man. Since they don't consider them themselves employees of Potter County, who are they here? An employee of the state?
They are employees at the state.
And the state has no responsibility for that report?
A part of the language amendment, the amendment and the language that be included in that is if it was an error on their end for the reporting, then that liability would reside at the state and not Potter County? If that is ultimately them as employees?
With CSCD.
CSCD, not the state, which is in essence the state.
The state.
How many employees are under their overall?
58, I believe.
And then Kay, at the end of the year, will we receive a copy of the ACA reporting? Will, will that be presented to the Commissioner's Court? Or anything that we provide?
If you would like, yes. We will have to provide all of the employees reported under our EIN, including CSCD, their 1095Cs with the W2 forms at the end of the year. And then we'll also be required to provide an authoritative transmittal to the IRS to include all of the reports provided under our EIN.
And we're utilizing TAC to help us through some of that reporting?
Yes, we are utilizing TAC for the Potter County general forms, and then we will be supplementing with CSCD forms for this year. And there is a, a safe harbor, if you will, for this year, where there will not be any penalties assessed at all this year as long as the employer can furnish evidence that they have acted in good faith and tried to file all the forms that they need to, both with the IRS and with the employee. So, I think the IRS recognizes that this year is a learning year for all entities, and so they've placed kind of a moratorium on penalties for this year. So, we won't have any penalties this year for any incorrect reporting or anything of that nature. But beginning next year, there will be some responsibilities.
But as a part of this year's submission, even though there's no penalties for the transition year, will you receive feedback that kind of closed the loop back to us of if there were penalties, this is what would be assessed? Or you're 100% in compliance, so we know how to modify or make adjustments internally?
I have not heard anything from the IRS. I've not seen anything from the IRS that indicates whether they're going to provide general feedback to everyone or if they'll just notify if there are problems. I would assume that they'll notify if there are problems. I will say that I believe that they're going to be inundated with issues for this year.
I may be wrong, but I think it's an individual's responsibility to include that with their taxes.
A part of it, yes. Yes, that's, that's a part of it. And the forms that we provide employees, they will be providing the IRS. Then we will have to provide the IRS with a transmittal and a mental copy of every form that went through all our employees.
The year of 2017, is there any way that we can separate these payrolls? With tax, with tax help, maybe?
Certainly, we could separate them by-
Take the responsibility off of us and put it on them?
We could, and we, we looked at that. We could do that even in for 2016. And if we need to for 2017, we certainly could as well.
By doing so?
But in doing so, there may be some consequences to CSCD with regard to grant funding and those kind of things. That was a concern of auditing and CSCD. And then it would result in, at very best, a separate payroll, which would be two totally separate payrolls running twice a month and three in months where there were elections. But that could certainly be done.
Well, we're such a small kind of sample size of 58 employees. That seems to be quite a bit of work to offset that. If we have some agreement in the language that protects us at best, maybe once, if, if there are penalties, then there would be kind of recourse to have something tangible. But I'm a little nervous to start it out of the gate, when we may be able to take care of it with an agreement.
We have the right language, I guess, and we'll take care of the issue.
Oh, yeah, it's just a matter, I mean, I think we have that understanding really already, assuming we get them to separate a new tax ID number. I think they're on board with what Kay's proposing, that we could separate, right?
To have a sense of that responsibility.
Yeah.
Do you need that, or do you need a motion?
Yes, I think so.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation as provided by our HR director to continue with our EIN number for CSCD employees and to amend an employee administrative agreement between Potter County and CSCD.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. I'm zero, thank you, Kay. Next is Time Clock Plus. Do you hear a report on Time Clock Plus and take any action necessary?
I emailed out an attachment to everyone late on Wednesday, or in the afternoon on Wednesday, and I have an updated version of that available. There is one correction to it. Judge Tanner's office will be coming on board, and we will be contacting her within the next day or two. Well, since our last update, Justice of Peace Four was implemented, also fire and rescue has been implemented. Both departments are running smoothly. Facilities has been contacted and has agreed on an initial implementation meeting in January. Mike will be contacting us in January to set that up. You know, we were making it dependent upon his schedule, so it can best meet his needs. The District Attorney's Office was contacted to schedule an implementation meeting and communicated back to us that they have decided to decline participation. The new codes that we created for emergency callback time are functioning well. We aren't having any issues with those. Our, we had a subcommittee developed after the last updated map, I believe, three times. Out of that subcommittee, a timesheet was, or a timesheet template has been created and I submitted it to the County Attorney's Office for review and approval, and have we gained that approval? County Attorney's Office is also preparing some sample language for a time clock policy to address all of the specifics related to clocking and buddy clocking and, and all of those kinds of things. And we'll continue to work through the remaining departments. We have facilities maintenance as indicated, scheduled for an implementation meeting in January at Mike's convenience. And then County Attorney will be contacted as soon as we can to bring those on. And then the Sheriff's Office with both detention center and the SO as soon as we can. Judge Tanner's office will be contacted within the next day or two to bring her office on. And then we'll need to work from there.
Those that have the client enlisted to here, are there any similar reasons why the client put their offices in this department?
Most of them have just indicated that they chose not to participate. The District Attorney's Office indicated that they had a program that's working well, and they choose not to change.
One thing I'll also add to that comment, Commissioner Kelly and I have been sitting on this subcommittee, if you will, the court advised us to work with Dave and Kay on. And we worked in the late summer, early fall, and so we've not reconvened since then, which is one of the reasons kind of for the update today. But we specifically have been talking about those that are declining and whether there is an AG opinion that this court has authority to make sure that we have a time record in our safekeeping, if you will. Michelle Arseneau from TAC came to speak to us, and now more than ever, I mean, there's absolutely a message that the liability falls on this county for the lack of a time record. So, I think part of what our subcommittee, and Dave, please keep me in line here, is to specifically look at that and look at those that are declining. And if they're choosing to not use the system, which is Time Clock Plus for our county, then what is the alternative? And so Kay also provided in her packet this, this timesheet that I think is open for feedback and modification. But this was an attempt to say, if Time Clock won't work for you, for whatever reason for your department, then we need a matter of record, early pay period, to cut a check, if you will. And today, if we-
So, this is standard of-
No, this is not. No, this is part of what we'll have to evaluate as a court. One, whether we have the authority, and that's worth holding on Dave, to help guide us in TAC. And then two, what is the alternative for those that don't want to use Time Clock Plus, so that we at least have a timesheet in our safekeeping? Because today, Kay, being honest here, today, if we got even this, would be a step in the right direction.
And many, many departments are providing something, so just not uniform and not publicly across the board. So, we've made great strides. We've come very-
So, you're comfortable with that something?
I would prefer to see something uniform, or at least something that, that meets the criteria of, you know, day of the week and how many hours are here and that kind of thing.
Can we force these departments to do timesheets for us?
No. But the ones that, to be clear, who, partners who work for you, absolutely, you certainly can. The others, you really can't. And Michelle kind of, I talked to her a little bit about this, and she seemed to think that there was a way to do it. I'm not so sure about that, since our, since county funds are being used.
I guess ultimately, I'm thinking about if there is an issue that comes down from the Department of Labor, who is the responsible for that?
Our county Commissioner's Board.
Who is it?
That's right.
So, I guess I'm kind of thoughtful about it.
Well, and one of the things we also suggested, and maybe, I, I'm not sure who formally requested an AG opinion, but I mean, I kind of feel like we're at that crossroad where we need direction, because Michelle was certainly saying something different as a consultant on the outside, so I get that. But the liability falls here, and especially as it relates to comp time and not fucking. That has hit us in the pocketbook several times and not that long ago. So, I mean, I don't think this is a liability out there far-reaching. This is something that has affected our taxpayers. So, I think it's worth confirming whether we have authority to request a sheet of paper documenting someone's crime that we're paying. I don't know how to formally request that or have authority to-
There are some departments that are, I mean, I'm pretty sure, and what, what we differ is in particulars about judges, me and Michelle and I, I mean, I, it looks to me, looking at, I mean, Department of Labor regulations and stuff, that the staff, personal staff of judges are exempt from time keeping. So, that takes care of most of the offices that aren't interested in not complying with time keeping. So, therefore, there is no likelihood that you can. So, now she disagrees with that, but I don't see where that's coming from at all. I think that's just a matter of legal interpretation. I mean, there's, there's, I've seen a Department of Labor opinion that says that those personal staff-
I guess ultimately, I'm just thinking about ultimately, if all trip was down, it still comes back to the fact that this court, regardless of what, in one way or another.
Which equals our taxpayers. So, maybe, and, and I think, you know, we can certainly reconvene as a committee and dive into this. Scott, we may need to pull you in, if that's okay? Because I think at that point, I, I felt like there was a general consensus that obviously the judges wouldn't be included, and even elected officials kind of in that umbrella, but any of their support staff or anyone else that payroll is being cut by the county, what jurisdiction, if any, do we have to make sure that we get a consistent time record? If anything, to secure the way we're paying out the time, but also the liability piece that comes with that. So, we can certainly reconvene as a committee.
Okay, thank you, Kay.
This has been a two-year project, and you can bring your hands down.
However, on the bright, I will say on the bright side, you mentioned past instances where we had to pay money out. I mean, the, from the standpoint, the Department of Labor standpoint, in perspective, they're like, right. You get rate what you're supposed to do. So, there were, those instances had no liability from the Department of Labor. I mean, the question there was if we pay out more money than the employee earned, which is a question of the day, stewardship taxpayer. But, but so, you know, from, from that, if you can see what my point, I'm making a sort of good news if you're worried about the feds coming in and giving us a hard time for situations like that. They aren't going to do that, because if we're satisfied that, you know, they just want to make sure that people who are getting, generating overtime get paid for it.
I agree, it's a concern of getting shafted by the employee.
I understand, so I understand. That's a general concern.
Which is essentially the opposite concern that the Department of Labor is.
Right.
No documentation. We don't need to stand on it.
Okay, number A, tax office to consider an act upon tax refunds for all the payment taxes. Sure, I didn't get any in my packet. Were there any, did you get any attached? Oh, you did? There's two. Okay. I didn't find, I didn't see if you had time around. These were just some checks, the usual thing, yeah. They try to pay Mission School District with our taxes. Can't do that.
Did you remember, Kay, they collect wish lists?
Yes. But in a divided, some people pay both Potter and Randall. Like dogs. Ready for motion on that? You'll say it's fine. Okay, make a motion that we can, that we act upon tax refunds for all payment taxes for the 2015-2016 year. Second. Motion second, all in favor, please write in. Zero, thank you. While you're there, sale of property to consider an act upon sale of apartment located 210 North Monroe Street to leave lady, no skits, no quiz, on Sunset. If that's wrong, I'm sorry. For $9,160, this is the price of sale. We've already received the money. Make a motion that we approve the sale of property located at 210 North Monroe Street. Motion and a second, all in favor, please write in. Zero, thank you. All right. Elections to discuss and approve the following for the March 1 primary election. A, order appointing early voting election judges and alternate judges establishing hours of operation for the early voting in voting places and establishing the maximum number of clerks for the March 1-2016 election. Do that approach for all people?
Yes. Now, the party chairs have already approved the judges and alternate judges. They're good as long as they're concerned. Big thing that we could look at are the hours because by state statute, Potter County has to pay for early voting. The parties do not pay for that part. So when it comes to deciding the number of workers, it will be a location and the hours. We try to be very cautious in what we're doing because that is, makes sense to the county. So the big thing here is just I wanted you guys to be aware of what we have planned. And you'll note there was a letter attached to you guys as well with an alternate that came through the process.
So Melinda, the main reason that you were looking at this was based off some complaints of the hours being different?
Yeah, it is mainly because Potter County and Randall County don't have the exact same hours for their branch locations. And, you know, last year, we worked with the counties last time there's a primary to make sure that we had hours that would accommodate the people that worked eight to five. So that we were open during, you know, we have increased, increased every election since I've been here just to try to accommodate the voter better. But we do receive some complaints regarding branch locations because Randall County has four years open at 8:00 AM. Now, they also geographically knew that because they, you know, a one in Amarillo and one there. That's the full deal deal where we don't have geographic, it's a little harder for us to pick and choose.
And it would essentially double your manpower.
Yes.
16,000 and then-
It was between approximately 16,000 and 34,000. And just based on all of the additional hours to be able to do that. When we budgeted the first year, we did not budget for the full meal deal. Because we were trying to-
I'm trying out.
Yeah.
My move that we would approve the appointment of the early voting election judges and alternate judges and establish the recommended hours of operation for early voting as noon to five of the branch in each, five here, here on the Santa Fe. And the establish the maximum number of clerks as stated in Q8.
Make a motion and a second, all in favor, please write in, please.
Melinda, one thing that I might suggest, budget time this year. I mean, I know it really is based on the elections and kind of what's happening, but this is in budget, our current budget. But if there's something that we can vet through, dive a little deeper. I mean, I think the question's a good question, but doubling the budget of what's out of budget is a tough counter to that.
That's a hard call thing. I mean, here's the, the notion is in law, it's a very, it takes a relatively small number of naval petition to force this to be a full meal deal. And I mean, I think in the last primary, there was some talk of doing that. And instead, we worked with the party chairs to say, well, can we compromise in here so that we make sure we are serving the member? We avoided that happening.
When you say a small number of naval petitions, there are a percent of that, that-
Fifteen names.
Fifteen names?
Fifteen names. It's not a percent. It's just very small. And so that's why, you know, you want to have enough there so that you don't throw yourself into that potential. But like, you know, I was saying, we have talked about Chitri and Tanya and they feel like the hours that were established meet their needs.
And I think where the challenge comes in is during the weekday when it's only noon to five. They're like the weekend, for the most part, a fair share of people have flexibility. But I think it's a weekday, the branch locations only being noon to five. So that cuts out the working people, if you will, in those branch locations, which is why we set it up that way.
Right. But the last two days, we did go ahead and expand it to noon to seven in those branch locations on the last two days, as well as we do have some hours established on the Sunday.
But I think it's the variation that confuses people.
Yes, it does.
If it was a standard noon to seven, that would be an easier message to communicate than, oh, the last two days, it'll be open until seven, wait till the, I think it's the message. I think it's a good question and obviously I supported us sticking with where we've gotten now. But I think if we can vet it during budget of what it might look like so that we have something maybe baked into the budget to give us some room to make a decision.
So, my only question, those things we're having extended that for weeks, two hours?
Well, if you just extended for the extra two hours, well, the only time it's still seven o'clock is that second week and that by law, the Santa Fe opens will be open, seven is seven that week. So we could, that second week in the branch locations, many choosing weeks, they go 12 to seven, you'd be talking two hours a day, times three days, times the number of early voters. And that would not be a substantial jump and could be something that we could consider in future actions.
Okay, in letter B, order appointing early voting ballot board judge and signature verification committee judge and establishing the maximum number of clerks for the early voting ballot board signature verification committee.
Yes, and again, the party chairs are aware of these requirements. We do want to have a signature verification committee. They're anticipating that the PACs will be sending out pre-populated postcards for early voting ballot by mail. And those will probably hit the mailboxes January 1. That's just a guess because we don't get to know these things. And, but if that happens, the signature verification committee is absolutely so essential for getting those signatures verified and the board of officers is everything.
Make a motion on that, Melinda.
I approve that, excuse me, I make a motion that we approve the appointment of the voting ballot board judge and signature verification committee judge and establish the maximum number of clerks for the voting ballot board and signature verification committee. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please write in. Zero, thank you. In letter C, appointment of the officers for central accounting station for the March 1-2016 primary election.
Again, the party chairs have reviewed this and everything is good with them. So this is more of a notification than anything else, but always watch you guys, wait.
Make a motion on C.
Make a motion to approve the appointment of officers for central accounting station for March 1-2016 primary election. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please write in, please.
I'm zero, thank you. And the sign the letter to the Secretary of State for Potter County to achieve successful status as opposed to the county. You know, they use this, yes, this in color. Yes, but we had our public hearing and of course, with that particular hearing, knowledge should be, could be taken by the court. We felt it was necessary or would be wise of us to have a letter to the Secretary of State's office if you guys said that you were in support of Potter County receiving success status. So I would like to include that with everything we submit to them.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate all of you. Okay, number 11, local government corporation to provide an update on the local government corporation.
So the last meeting we had was on December 16th and just as a matter of protocol, I'd like to just put this on to keep everybody updated. Obviously, there's been a lot of media communication about the LGC and any activity under that umbrella. But one of the main items that was being discussed, there were two main things, and I'm just going to read this agenda item for the LGC, was presentation, discussion, and action services for determining feasibility of affiliated minor league baseball stadium programming and cost, estimating such a stadium, financial projections, and economic impacts. So there were three, there was an RFQ sent out on behalf of the city and there were three responses of who could potentially come in and essentially provide a market analysis, a strategic planning market analysis. The big theme was the MPEV, as has been discussed up to the vote, was really based on a four to five year study. And so it felt like it was time, as they started to dive into some of the detail, to maybe get another look at that. And so the individual that was selected, and I may butcher his name, but Relsford and Dunley. And so they were there at the LGC and spoke to what they could do and what their expertise was. The LGC voted to move forward with them. So what we're expecting as a part of it is an analysis to come back and to start taking a deeper dive at what does the market show and then go back into what is the cost, what are the schematics, how will they pay for it, all those good things. So a lot of discussion to come from the LGC and that still continues. There was also discussion about appointments on separate, different sub-lords. As you know, we are not a voting member on the LGC. I continue to kind of say our piece, Potter County is vested and we'd like to, you know, continue those discussions. But we are meeting next Wednesday after the new year again. And then formal action will be taken on the committees. So as that is presented, I'll bring that back to you guys.
For the update, I wanted to ask you a question about this issue with the double A team. Can you give an update on that? What happened?
The issue?
One day we were going to get a double A team, the next day, the commissioner of the San Antonio teams.
Well, you know, I think, I mean, I certainly can't speak on behalf of the executive or the advisory committee that's working on the dealings of it. But I can say that all of that is being vetted and what can happen for the city. One of the questions that was asked of the LGC, the voting members that day was, if we have a chance, do we want to go after the opportunity of the double A? And so I think there was a common theme of if there's a chance, let's go after that. And then if there's not a chance, what does that look like for the community? So I think it's just pursuing all the avenues. And I'm sure all cities are vested to make sure that if they can get a double A team, they want to get that. That, I kind of said, it changes the game. You would appreciate, you know, the joke. But I didn't mean it that way. But I said, that really does change the ballgame. So I think that's part of what the executive committee is looking at and what the LGC is trying to outweigh. And Mr. Childers, our new city manager, interim city manager, is very involved in those discussions as is Bob Cowell at the city. So I think more to come, that's for sure.
I don't think we're having a double A team many, many years ago.
I think he also raised the price tag and got 20 million, didn't he?
Well, and I think that's part of what could, what is supposed to be vetted by this market analysis. So what he shared with us was a four to five year study and the price tag for what was originally slated for maybe an independent of 32.5. And he said, you could get that for 15 million. So I think it's all a matter of opinion of what kind of stadium and what are you building for what type of team. But, you know, micers perk up when the price goes down, so no big surprise there. But at the same time, you want to have something that can support what the future of the city is going to be.
Be more tolerant, that's what you're-
Yeah, absolutely. So the meetings do, are now widely attended, quite, there's really a standing room only. That used to not be the case maybe a year ago. So they're widely attended, they're widely publicized by all of our media channels. So I think more to come for sure.
Out of 10B, there's just no action. I mean, all there's gonna be, sorry, I went to the legislature, no action. Number 12, Potter County Bill, bond board designation of county court law member. Designate Potter County Court Law Judge who will serve on the board for 2016. I believe it's Judge Roberts.
They've been offering the, so, makes that designation.
Okay, so I make a motion that we appoint to designate Judge Colquitt Roberts to be the member for 2016. Make a motion and a second, all in favor, please write in. Number 13, Attorney General opinion KP-0047, prohibition of firearms in county buildings. Report on Texas Attorney General opinion on exploiting firearms in county buildings and making actions necessary.
Just a gift that keeps on giving. As you're aware, last week, the Attorney General issued a series of opinions concerning carrying handguns. One of those, KP-0047, which specifically addressed the question of court habits. To give you some background, as the legislature passed the law of penalty section 411.209, Government Code, what the legislature did was create a cause of action against governmental entity, whether it's the state or the subdivision of the state, that posts signage on government-owned property or government leased property forbidding carrying a handgun on that property if in fact the law doesn't permit borrowing and carrying a handgun on that property. The new Government Code section did not alter the pre-existing law on where handguns can and cannot be carried. It was intended to effectuate an enforcement mechanism against governmental entities that are properly prohibited carrying handguns on government property. What the law has previously provided and continues to provide is that handguns, whether licensed or not, may not be carried onto the premises of a government court or offices utilized by a government court. So that's the key parameter we're concerned with here today. And the reason that is a matter of some dispute controversy is that the Penal Code defines premises or purposes of a government court where hand guns may be prohibited as a building or a portion of a building. Does not include sidewalks, grounds, parking garages, garages, parking lots, that kind of thing. The Attorney General in opinion KP-47 undertook to try and determine, what does that mean? Does it mean the entire building where a court is situated? Or does it only mean the courtroom and court's offices? Again, the definition being a building or a portion of a building. What the Attorney General ultimately determined was that to say it meant a building would read out of the statute that portion that says, or portion of a building. And so what the Attorney General determined was that the covered area from which handguns may be prohibited is only the courtroom or court offices of a government court. Potter County doesn't operate it or it's not a government court. I have some legal concern with that because in effect, the Attorney General has read out the other portion of the definition as being a building or. out the other portion of the definition as being a building or. And there are some cases, there is not a case that's directly addressed this question. There are some cases that have accepted the general premise that where the law bars carrying a handgun under section forty-six oh three of the Penal Code or forty-six oh three five of the Penal Code and restricts that, that location to a premises, the cases that we've seen so far generally take that to mean a building. I also understand when those cases have been decided in the past, in, let me back up a second. In the past, it's been generally the fairly unquestioned practice in the state of Texas to prohibit carrying weapons into a courthouse. The reasons for that should be relatively self apparent. Courthouse is where court is held. Where court is held, emotions run high. A courtroom proceeding is generally volatile enough on its own without injecting the potentially combustible element of someone being armed during that proceeding. The governor's brief to the Attorney General proceeding the opinion in question theorized that the legislature clearly only meant to prohibit guns in a courtroom or in the court's offices. That leaves those who are responsible for courthouse security in something of a quandary, as any law enforcement professional would probably tell you. Security is not really security if it's reactive, it's proactive. And knowing who are the good guys and who are the bad guys with guns is a difficult proposition. It's also a difficult proposition to try and account for if the law tells you, you can't carry a gun into the courtroom, but you can stand in the hall with a gun and let the chips fall where they may after a particularly contentious courtroom proceeding. I will tell you, experience teaches that most courthouse shootings occur as the result of family law proceedings. Certainly, it's not out of the question for a criminal law proceeding to give rise to courthouse violence, but history teaches those usually arise from family law proceedings. And we all know family law proceedings occur in both this building as well as in the court's building across the street. The other concern we have is the Santa Fe building, which has one court in it, that is JP precinct one, fourth floor. The county has received notice, two separate notices, one pertaining to, or a demand letter, I should say, one pertaining to this building and the court's building across the street indicating that if we don't take down our current signage prohibiting the carrying handguns by license holders on those buildings, that the matter will be forwarded to the Attorney General for enforcement. We have received a similar letter with respect to the Santa Fe building. Now, I should, I should outline what that means. There is no private right of action under section four eleven point two zero nine. That is, an individual citizen does not have standing to sue Potter County to collect damages. In fact, the enforcement mechanism that is contemplated by the statute is that a complaint will be forwarded to the Attorney General. The Attorney General will investigate the complaint. If the Attorney General determines that legal action is warranted, and that's the language used in the statute, then the Attorney General may pursue a collection of civil penalty from the offending governmental body. However, before doing so, the Attorney General is required to send notice, giving the political subdivision in question fifteen days to remove the signs and come into compliance and thereby avoid the imposition of civil penalties. Civil penalties can be significant. First, first offense, for lack of a better word to put it, civil penalty is a thousand dollars up to one thousand five hundred dollars each continuing day of non-compliance. It's considered a separate violation, so additional civil penalties can be incurred for each day that the signs are still up. Also, the Attorney General can recover in a lawsuit to collect those civil penalties, litigation costs, and reasonable attorney fees. So it is not, it is not an insubstantial potential financial issue at work. Where we are and where we need to go at this point is a bit speculative. Of course, the Attorney General's decision is not binding law. It is exactly what it reports to be, the opinion of the Attorney General. It is worth some significant consideration inasmuch as the Attorney General is the officer responsible for enforcing this particular law. And so it is, to that end, something of a telegraph of the position the Attorney General will be seeking to establish in court. Ultimately, however, court will have to resolve that issue, whether it is a court in Potter County or a court in Travis County, is up to the Attorney General. Venue is established under section four eleven point two zero nine as being proper, either in the county where the political subdivision's principal office is located or a district court in Travis County. Where the AG would seek to litigate that, your guess is as good as mine. There are probably advantages and disadvantages to both alternatives from the AG's perspective as well as from ours. The problematic part of this is that the law, as the AG notes in their opinion, is unclear because the law simply says building or a portion of a building. And so we're left to hazard a guess at what that really means at some significant potential expense if we guess wrong.
But you have fifteen days to correct it if you.
Once the AG provides a notice.
Before there's a true penalty in terms of liability expense.
That is correct. So the apparent intent there is for the AG to look at it and decide, is the governmental body in question really intending to violate this provision?
So how much local reference was local autonomy that we look at? And all of that was just to lead basically across the state?
They're not really required to look at any of that. It's really a question of are we violating citizens' second amendment rights? The law, there's a comment in legislative history that's noted in the Attorney General's opinion that indicates that the purpose of the statute is essentially to vindicate the second amendment rights of citizens to carry weapons or to carry handguns where they are not specifically legally prohibited from carrying. There is a second opinion, KP forty-nine, which, which goes on to opine about what exactly the signage that may violate section four eleven point two oh nine is. That opinion is more expansive than, in my opinion, the statute admits of. What KP forty-nine essentially says is that any sign that prohibits someone from carrying a handgun, a license holder, carrying a handgun where they are not specifically statuteually or storely prohibited, carrying it is in violation. If you read section four eleven point two zero nine, it actually only speaks to signage under section thirty point oh six of the Penal Code, which is concealed carry criminal trespass warrant. And the reason that's significant is there is also a provision under section thirty point oh seven of the Penal Code that allows for signage to warn those who would be carrying That's, whether that was a legislative oversight in drafting of what became section four eleven point two oh nine or intentional, I don't know. There's not any real legislative history to spell that out. The Attorney General's interpretation is no matter. I'm not sure I agree with that interpretation, but for now, I think the key consideration is less that and more what the county's position on allowing handguns into the courthouse may be. I don't pretend to tell you what the security concerns, how to address the security concerns if the Attorney General's interpretation is accepted, is correct. My understanding is Randall County has chosen to go ahead and accept the Attorney General's interpretation of statute. How they plan to implement security, I don't know. I don't know whether that means people are simply asked as they come into the courthouse, do you have a license to carry that handgun? Are you aware you cannot carry it into a courtroom? Or whether they intend to establish security checkpoints at the entryway of any courtroom, which is of course the other possibility, which would be of course more expensive.
Why even have security if they don't allow anybody to come in with their handguns?
So Scott, is it, does it warrant us asking for an AG opinion kind of on our own based on the way our buildings are separated and the way? I think what the uniqueness of Potter County is the design of where our courts lie in terms of the building. Love County is set up similar across the street. They have similar courtrooms. I wouldn't say apples to apples, but at least kind of a similar conversation.
I don't know how useful that would be. The Attorney General in, in opinion KP forty-seven avoided specific interpretation of how the court facilities in Tom Green County, that was concerned, Tom Green County, are situated. However, they are not entirely dissimilar from us. Their, their court facilities and county facilities are spread among several buildings. And most of those buildings, light hours, have court facilities and also contain offices that are non-courty. And what the AG essentially said was determination of which offices utilized by the courts are essential to the court's functioning is a matter to be determined, to be determined by the governmental entity presumably in consultation with the courts about which offices they utilize. That becomes sort of relevant, not sort of, it becomes relevant in our case. Perhaps the Santa Fe building is the most poignant example because not only does the Santa Fe building house Justice of the Peace Precinct one, it also houses, of course, CSCD and juvenile probation, both of which are departments directly answerable to the courts and are considered in a lot of respects arms of the court in enforcing its orders. I have not yet had an opportunity to speak to Terry Easterling or to Don Gaines about their views on the subject. I hesitate to predict that we'd be thrilled by the possibility of folks coming in there with handguns, but particularly since we've had some experience in the past with somebody trying to disarm an officer in the CSC offices. But again, I'm not, I'm not tempted to discuss that with them. But I do have to let you know, we have received notice, a complaint that has to give us three days to comply with their complaint, otherwise the complaint will be forwarded to the Attorney General. They will look at it and determine whether legal action is warranted and give us a warning to give us fifteen days to correct if they intend to sue us.
Is that your suggestion that we don't have that to happen?
Or? Well, if I, if I felt more sure about which interpretation was likely to be ultimately the one the court came down on, I would feel more comfortable giving you a direct suggestion about what to do. This is really, at this point, particularly in light of the uncertainty of the statutory language, this is really a policy question that I'm afraid I have to drop in here loud.
Let me ask this, what about the Capitol Building and people going into that building with guns?
You can carry a handgun if you have a license into the Capitol Building. You can't carry one into the chambers when they are meeting and it's been noticed or into the various meeting rooms, which were publicly, and this, that brings up another point, so long this room would also be subject to a prohibition, specific prohibition during meetings that have been properly noticed under the Public Information Act, which is why it's so important to have the notice right this morning, but not necessarily in the hallway. Right, that's correct. Assuming the Attorney General's interpretation is accepted is correct.
So you're going to force me to start typing again, huh?
Not me, not me.
Have you looked at the McPlannan County Commissioner's Board?
Yes.
What's your opinion on that?
I think that the concerns voiced by McPlannan County Judge are very real and very pragmatically correct. At the same time, I have, I would be remiss if I didn't say, this is a delicate balance because it does involve a explicitly guaranteed constitutional right. Now, here's, this is, this is the trouble for in constitutional law, when competing concerns intersect, and that's what you have here. Constitutional right to carry a handgun where you're not explicitly prohibited from doing so, of course, the United States Supreme Court in Heller and McDonald decided that is a personal constitutional right, yet the Supreme Court also recognized it's subject to reasonable regulation. Whether or not you can carry it in a courthouse would be a subject of reasonable regulation. Problem right here is that the legislature has not been clear in defining the parameter of that regulation. And they've left it to you, unfortunately, they've also told you, if you get it wrong, you're subject to liability, potentially to several thousand dollars.
Which you have an opportunity to correct. So if you get it wrong, and it gets escalated, you have fifteen days to correct and make modifications.
But it don't change, it don't change anything. It doesn't change anything other than we want it to pay. All it changes is that we have given in.
Or that we have, they have, they have discerned based on the complaint and our property that that's the direction that we should, I mean, I guess I feel like if this goes to the AG and they come back with an opinion, at least we know their opinion. I mean, at this point, we're just guesstimating of what their opinion will be.
Well, I think I would, I would hazard a guess by way of saying that I think the Attorney General has made their intent relatively clear with opinion KP forty-seven. If you are not prohibiting, if you're prohibiting handguns anyplace other than the courtroom or the court's offices, they are probably going to proceed, that's for sure.
So do we have, do we have a listing of what would be considered under the court office? I think the courtrooms are, that's the kind of no brainer, if you will, but the court, should we, I guess is maybe the next question, should we have a listing of the, what would fall under the criteria of court's offices?
What the opinion advised was that the court consult with the judges.
Okay.
And try to identify what those, what the judges identify as those offices that are essential to their functions.
And that's, and that's what McPlannan County did. Their, their judges listed the areas that they consider essential to their.
And should we get into litigation, that would be a, whether or not it would be a dispositive evidentiary point, it would certainly be a significant.
So if we do that, then anybody that comes in with a gun, we give them a little map of where they can go or they can't go?
I suppose so. One of the, I would, I would add that the, what the Attorney General left out was, of course, that would be, probably be in consultation with the sheriff also, who is responsible for court's security.
So if someone comes in, let's say some Joe Brown walks in with a gun, and he tells our security guys he has a gun, and they see the gun, and they say, okay, you can go in, but don't go into the courtroom, and don't go into the court office. So that means essentially if that courtroom is not secured by somebody, you're going to have to leave their post, follow that person with the gun around the courthouse until they know for sure he didn't go in to.
Or do they need a post anymore? From somewhere?
Potential, yeah. Well, as the state Capitol, they have a reader for concealed handgun remedies. Of course, it's scanned, and it comes right up there, your picture and everything, but you don't have to claim it, yeah. Interesting times. So we're going to make the decision today.
Well, the reason we brought it to your attention was not only make you aware of the opinion, but also of the complaint. So three days presumably has already elapsed since we, since we received complaints. Now, mind you, it was supposed to be discussed yesterday, of course, we were able to do so, but, but we have not heard anything from the Attorney General.
And just in terms of diligence and next step, Judge, I don't know, are we visiting, should we be visiting with the district judges and what they would consider corresponding space to kind of have that in our toolkit to prep for, I guess, a future discussion?
They did, Kenny, courts law, the JP.
And all of them.
Yeah, as I see it, essentially, you're left with three options. First, dig in and say. Yeah, as I see it, essentially, you're left with three options. First, dig in and say, we're leaving it as is. Second, to accede to their wishes and say, no, we will only bar carrying into the courtroom or the court's offices. Or third, engage, as you're talking about, with the courts to find out what are the offices they identify as essential to their function.
Well, I guess I feel like the third option is going to show how big the footprint is. I expect the judges to come back and say X, Y, and Z are all part of my core functions. I expect that to be a bigger footprint than what we would come up with.
Yeah, I would say, I would add this, just so you're aware of it, I don't know, but again, it's part of the AG's opinion, so it's a healthy suggestion from the AG, but probably not dispositive, although I assume it would be within the framework of the AG's legal position should they file a lawsuit. One of the factors the AG looked at in KP forty-seven was the court's own ability to control premises by way of order. For instance, well, not for instance, part of that is based on the fact that under section forty-six oh three, A three, which is where it says that you can't carry a gun onto the premises of a government court or offices utilized by a court, it further provides unless the court by regulation or written order says otherwise. In other words, says you can carry a gun. And so what the AG took that to mean was those portions where you, those areas where you cannot carry a gun under the penal code are essentially those areas subject to the control of the courts. So that may be, yeah, I think we would encounter more resistance from the attorney general if the judges, for instance, were to say, you know what, every office in Potter County is essential to our function. I think the AG would probably fight something, say that's beyond the jurisdiction of the courts to control. Now, whether that's right or not, again, this would be a lot more comfortable, I'd be a lot more comfortable standing here if we had more definitive legal guidance than we do. We're kind of sailing into uncharted waters.
Somebody's going to have to eventually take this to court.
Yeah, I assure you, it will go to court.
Because I think that's the only way, though. Our legislature just has dropped the ball, not clarified this as well as it should. And then we'll be in session for another year, so that will be the one I-
I make a motion, we don't do anything. Okay.
You made a motion?
I did.
A second motion.
Judge, your question, well, as far as January first, we have to put up the other side, the thirty oh seven side.
We're ready to do that. You made the call that we've already asked about what you wanted to do, and we had the signs, we essentially kind of put them on hold and said, wait, once we heard the attorney general says hold off as long as we can, because we didn't know if we're going to have to put up signs at the main entrance or signs sitting front of every courtroom. So we're ready to go. If you want to stand back with what you already decided, we're ready to go.
Yeah, the thirty oh seven signs, unless you decide to take them all down, they need to go up on January.
Yeah.
And what do they, where does it say?
Open carry.
Oh, it carries.
Yeah. So we're not having to have a sign on-
It says exactly what a thirty oh seven says, except it doesn't say concealed.
Two center, yeah. So.
Okay.
And Mike and so he's come up with a plan about where the sign is going to be displayed.
So we're going to begin to leave our signs up and then put new signs up?
That's what's before you today, that's part of the question.
So let me reword my motion. I make a motion, we don't do anything about concealed handgun license, but on January one, we put the new signs on the doors referring to the open carry.
The thirty oh seven signs.
Yes. Okay, I have a second now.
Sir.
I have a motion. Yes, of course.
I'd still like to see us get all the judges together to clarify what they consider.
You probably will have to, but this sets it off for a while.
And can I also mention that if the judges do decide what's going to be in office and what's their office order, those signs will have to be posted everywhere-
Right.
-by judge.
Right.
So if that's in the front door here, then it has to be posted wherever you don't want that in there. And I know as far as the sheriff's office, we would still check, we'd ask them for their concealed handgun license because you don't want anybody coming in here that, you know, is going to have a gun and be carrying it illegally.
To be clear, well, you're talking about the courthouse because the sheriff's department itself is subject to a separate provision, that's not an issue here. Sheriff's Department is free as a law enforcement agency to disarm anyone before they enter the non-public areas as well as the correction, the jail. Jail is subject to another provision, it's not, you can't carry a gun in jail. That would be really strange if you could carry a gun in jail, especially when even police officers bringing somebody into a jail have to check their weapon.
So the asking of the permits by-
Yeah, when they come into Billy, yeah, certainly, because if you don't have a permit, you're not supposed to be coming in here.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Others? Okay, yes. Five, zero, we give no.
Well, certainly, I will tell you, I will promise you this, is if I hear from the attorney general, he will be the first to know.
Thanks, Scott.
I constitute emergency meeting.
Good.
Okay. All right, I'm ready. Number fourteen, Park County project, we have any projects reported?
No.
Number fifteen, elevator maintenance contractor, considering act upon extending an elevator maintenance contract to decent elevators for an additional two years, we need two one sixteen to one zero one eighteen, contract terms pricing at TCPN contract number R one five zero eight zero one.
What it is, it's just an extension off of, the contract that we work off of is not a big process, it's a cooperative contract provided throughout the state, this is a process of participation. We've been on board with them through the TCPN contract of a five-year deal, so there's an additional two years that we can tag on, that makes an additional clause.
I move we extend the elevator maintenance contract for decent crap.
Second.
Additional two years.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Zero, thank you. Number sixteen, equipment process to consider act upon the purchase of a communications tower for our suspension complete, Tower Service Company, the number forty-four thousand four hundred and nine dollars, twelve seven cents, funds are budgeted in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, this year.
Sorry, it's my Steve Jobs stuff. This is the communications tower for the new fire station out there. Should have been a cop, we didn't pull this company in, this is obviously, it's the same guy's, the tower would have taken it, of course. I make a motion to accept the bid of forty-four thousand four hundred and nine dollars and thirty-seven cents, Tower Service Company, for fire station three.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. And number seventeen, employment items to consider act upon the following employment items, road bridge department termination, agent Ferguson, equipment operator one, decent elevator, transfer of Charles Edbert from maintenance tech to the equipment operator one, for question today, Ferguson. The hiring of Andy Wright as maintenance tech, transfer of Jeff, how do you say his last name, is that actually, Nemo?
Nemo.
Nemo, as maintenance tech to crew leader, and the hiring of Britton Powell as maintenance tech. This, oh, that was first.
We approve the road bridge deployment.
Second, with one quick correction, I think on the first one, it's the retirement, is that correct question and not the retirement?
Oh, okay.
That's a big difference.
That's not the record, should be.
Yeah.
The first one, road bridge, that's the one?
Okay. Okay. Big difference. Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Five, zero, thank you. And then the maintenance facilities, the reservation on Charles Freischer, lead groundskeeper, transfer of Monte Alvaro, lead groundskeeper, for question Charles, and the transfer of Nick Leders as groundskeeper one, I'm sorry, I can't talk, the transfer of Nick Leders as groundskeeper one, pressing Matthew. So I have a motion on this.
So what?
Okay, second. A motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Five, zero, thank you. The general report today is five hundred and thirty-two total, eighty-five beds of preschools, no ones and childrens, and business, it's eighty-two percent felonies and ten percent misdemeanors. And there's an eight percent no.
There's another on there, so I don't know what that is.
There's others, probably.
There were, yeah.
Have any insurance signs today?
Yeah.
Insurance sign, zip or station, engine dollars for next time? Okay, I guess that's all we had today. Thank you, everybody, for going along with this on the way. We are concerned and happy to hear.